Welcome to the regular meeting of council. Tuesday, September 21st, 4:40 PM. Meeting called to order and we'll have a moment of silence.
You gotta let me in.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on September 21st, 2021, beginning at 4:40 PM be approved as circulated to all members of council.
All in favor? Motion carried. Any declaration of pecuniary interest?
Yes, I do have one if I can now. Thing here, that is the bylaw regarding the. So which line from. And there was with that number B.
I believe it would be by law 21-073. Counselor Shaba is your microphone now?
Oh, yeah, the light is on. Yeah, so that would be that by law.
Okay. Rick?
Yes, I have a conflict interest on, uh, canary interest on item 64, stormwater tunnel and enclosed sanitary sewer line engineering study. My son's the waterworks foreman and I'm not sure if that will affect his job, so.
Okay, duly noted, thank you. Uh, petitions and delegations, none noted. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of council held September 7th, 2021, and that council accept the minutes from the following committee meetings, minutes of the museum advisory committee meeting held June 16th, 2021.
All in favor?
Can I just?
Yes, any comments?
Yes, I do, I do. I just want to make an amendment to the minutes because when I declare pecuniary interest, the minutes reflected that I had a prior, something like other hiring involvement with both projects. I just want to have that corrected. I do not, did not have any prior engagement or any workings with the. The sewage plant. Line coming in from Swastika to Kirkland Lake. But I do have involvement with the engineering of the demolition of Duncan. Just want that to be reflected in minutes. Minutes indicated that I have something to do with both parts, as not the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, reports of municipal officers and communications. Megan Elliott, department updates to council.
Thank you, worship, through you to council, I'm just pulling up here. Okay. We compiled a report with some information from each departments to present to you today with a little bit of an update of some things that have been going well, some of our challenges. We wanted to just have some information coming your way of where everything's standing since we haven't been reporting on official key performance indicators recently. So this report is just to receive and to have a discussion if there's any questions you might have for any of the departments.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, mine has to do with the roads department. And in this report, it mentions paving Nipissing Lane. And I'm just wondering how that road became a priority. When our residential roads are in such bad shape and I, I travel that road. Not often, but often enough. And quite frankly, it was better than a lot of our paved streets. So I'm just wondering what the rationale was behind picking that street. Because it's a, it's an industrial area, yes, it's not paved, but. You know, it, it was in good shape compared to a lot of our other streets.
Uh, Mr. Roman?
Um, I, I can't address the issue of how it, how it was selected. When I, when I started here, it was part of the approved capital budget for, for this year. So, um, we're, we're moving ahead with it. But as I said, the, the decision to, to pick Nipissing Lane came before me. I know that doesn't help much, but.
No, no, thanks, Mr. Roman, and, and I certainly didn't mean to put you on the spot. You can't answer for decisions that were made and I didn't pick it up in the, in the budget. So that's fine, thank you.
Uh, I do know, Counselor Owen, that there has been several complaints from the businesses in that area from the dust and requiring the road to be graded more often than any other of the streets, I think that we have gravel on. So it, uh, been in the works department's mind for a few years now. I know in the last three or four years, even before this council. And, uh, I think basically they found some money that, uh, on one project that allowed, uh, didn't go as high as what they originally thought, so. That's why, one of the reasons we're moving ahead was on the budget.
No, that's fine, I was just curious as to why that road was picked and, uh, you know, any road being done is good news as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, it's not a high volume street, I agree, but, uh, it's been a long time since we've done much work other than grading of it.
Counselor White?
So I just have a couple of things. The first, I want to thank staff for, for putting out the updates consistently daily on all the work that's being done across the municipality. Um, I received multiple compliments that, um, core staff, that they are certainly keeping everybody updated, both on CJPL and social media. So your efforts aren't in vain, people are noticing the difference. Um, I, it is definitely good news coming out of the building and property fire department record regarding enforcement of unresolved orders on derelict buildings. I'm excited to see what they're coming up with for a different plan. This council has brought to the forefront our desire to rid the community of derelict buildings. Mayor Pat's been a supporter of this since prior councils as well. I do feel cautious optimism, however, because the idea that someone will buy a derelict building before they will buy a clean, a newly cleaned lot, I, I don't agree with staff on that and I hope they have better plans coming forward for that. And I was very pleased both in the museum committee meeting and this update today to see the increased usage of the museum over July and August. We received 21 memberships over the summer, so that's amazing. And I hope we see that increased usage continue year over year. So thanks, guys.
If I may note, uh, this, this report's a wee bit different than we normally get, but there was a lot of good detail on every department and, uh, as a counselor, we can envision what's, what's happening within the departments and little things that we may not have heard of before. So it, it was a good update for sure.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out one other thing too, and that's our CIP program. That's something that Stacy championed and, uh, and there was public meeting here about it that I attended. And the idea, um, was to make the community look better and at the same time develop economic development. And, um, we have already seen results. Char Technology, uh, is, is going to use it and that'll be a, another diversification for our economy. And, uh, I just want people to realize that council is looking at innovative and different ways of attracting, uh, new businesses and people to Kirkland Lake. And it's a very competitive market and it's good to see the program work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Owen. The other comments? Thank you for that detailed report. We have a motion.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that report number 2021-CLK-020 entitled Department Updates to Council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.1. Or 6.3, sorry. Where's two? Oh, sorry, Peter. Item 6.2, 2021 Operating Final Financial Reports. Uh, Peter Georgov, Deputy Treasurer. Go ahead, Peter.
Sorry about that. Your worship, uh, to you through, uh, through you to council. The first report is the 2021 Operating Financial Reports. And it's actually broken into, uh, into three reports. One speaks to the general operating. Uh, second water and the third wastewater. Uh, the groupings that you will see on the report were made uh, to compare against the budgets and the tax levy that were passed under bylaws 21-045 and 21-047. To provide the most current revenues and expenditures possible, uh, the reporting is done year to date to the end of August. A new caution, it's a snapshot that was taken on September 14th. Uh, the municipality operates on a, on a fiscal year basis and the budgets are set accordingly. So accruals are, are recorded at year end as opposed to monthly. Um, timing is a factor when, when you're comparing the actual to budget. For example, um, our insurance premiums are paid and expensed early in the year. They cause the expenditure that's the grouping is called administration and other to appear high, uh, when you're comparing to the annual budget. Uh, the report also addresses a motion that was passed at the September 7th meeting of council. Um, that staff be directed to report back to council on the budgetary impact of the post of position as Director of Corporate Services. At this time, the general administration budget is sufficient to provide for that position in 2021. I'll try to respond to your questions to these operating reports, uh, but I may ask the, the managers to answer should they relate to individual departments. Any questions that cannot be answered today will be addressed at the next meeting of council. Thank you.
Comments or questions from council? It certainly was a detailed report, Peter. Looks like we're doing okay. Things are falling in line with budget pretty well in most cases. Again, as you said, part of it is timing of the year for some of these expenses and revenues as well. Counselor White?
So I just have some questions on being 2021-0042, $50,000, one small building on the list, not started yet. Uh, I'm just seeking more information about that. Is it one project that we're looking to complete for $50,000? Or is that $50,000 that's left in the budget for demolitions for 2021?
So that's on the, on the second report.
Mr. Haas?
Thank you, your worship, um, through you to council. I believe that is a aggregate sum for, uh, multiple buildings. If that is possible, sometimes you do find a building and it comes in at a higher rate. But, um, we had in the capital budget, if I recall correctly, my files won't open here. Hundred thousand for Duncan and 50,000 for other buildings in plural.
Thank you.
So just, sorry?
Yep, go ahead.
So just to follow up on that, is there buildings on the docket to be completed for, uh, 2021? The year of 2021?
Hopefully, yes, their buildings were identified. I'll turn it over to Courtney after. The, some of the buildings that were identified up previously as we were preparing the capital budget, I believe, had been taken care of subsequently by owners or new owners. And Courtney has been doing a pretty good job keeping on track with some of the others that could be, uh, addressed as the year comes to a close. Courtney, if you wish to jump in?
Yeah, so we have, um, a list of about three to four properties right now. I won't say the addresses because they're under unsafe orders right now. But hopefully we can get majority of those done.
Would those, would those mostly, would those be mostly residential?
Yeah, mostly residential.
Okay. That's good news. Not that we want to tear down buildings, but we need to clean up the, the derelict buildings, that's for sure. Any other comments or questions for Peter? None noted?
The motion moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Stacy White. Whoop, sorry, was there a question or just the?
I'm just wondering, are you dealing with the first report or the second report?
This is just for 6.2, 2021 Operating Financial Reports Year to Date List.
Yeah, thank you.
Moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that report number 2021-FIN-003 entitled 2021 Operating Financial Reports Year to Date be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.3. 2021 Capital Budget. Status and update. Sorry, go ahead, Peter.
I'm sorry, your worship, uh, through you to council. Uh, this particular report has two purposes. Again, it's to provide a current snapshot status of, of the capital projects compared against the annual budget. You'll note that it also includes comments that were provided by departments. The second purpose is to address identified project shortfalls at this time and with recommendations on how to, to provide for them. As was mentioned with the previous report on the operating, I'll try to respond to the questions, uh, and, uh, possibly reach out to the, to the managers of the individual departments. And again, any questions that we can answer will, uh, we'll address at the next council meeting. Thank you.
So do you wish to give further details on any shortfalls or issues that you've run into?
I believe they're captured in, in appendix B.
Yes.
There is a listing of, of each individual, uh, and showing the, uh, the over budget or the unfunded and, and in the comments section, uh, it does elaborate or explain a little bit as well as the, the recommendation.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions or concerns? None noted, Peter?
Thank you.
We have a motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that report number 2021-FIN-004 entitled 2021 Capital Budget Status Update as of 10th September 2021 be received? That staff be directed to fund capital project shortfalls identified as of September 10th, 2021 as follows. B 2021-14 Transfer 11,976 From Infrastructure Capital Reserve. B 2021-25 Utilize $386 Of Tax Levy Dollars Already Raised In 2021. B 2021-26 Utilize $661 Of Cemetery Trust Funds Interest. B 2021-35 Utilize $121 Of Tax Levy Dollars Already Raised In 2021. Neonet Mobile Stations Project Transfer $2,026 From Organization Restructuring And Efficiency Reserve. And B 2020-18 Gas Detection, or Gas Detection Equipment, Health And Safety Transfer $462 From Waterworks Reserve Fund.
Any further comments? None noted, all in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Peter. Item 6.4, is that Rick? Item 6.4 Stormwater Tunnel And Enclosed Sanitary Sewer Line Engineering Study. Jim Roman, Director of Public Works. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. Uh, this report has, has to do with, um, our, our need to take a look at the tunnel that runs underneath Kirkland Lake and the sewer line that, that's inside it. Going, going back to the early days of town, they dug this tunnel to drain Kirkland Lake down to the south end, the creek at the south end of town. Uh, later on, a 18-inch sewer line was run through the tunnel. So it's being used, that tunnel's being used both for stormwater drainage and, and to, to hold the, the sewer line. It was last inspected in 1995, but we can't find any details on that, on that inspection. So the last documented inspection was done in 1967. So it's, it's well overdue. We want to make sure that, uh, that, that sanitary line particularly is, is in good shape. Uh, we put out a request for proposals and we received one from Andrews Engineer. Uh, they're a firm with considerable experience in, in this type of work. Uh, they're proposing a, a two-phase approach to the project. First, by running cameras and drones through the tunnel as well as testing the, the atmosphere with gas meters. Based on what they find, um, their, their phase two approach is, is when they would actually do the inspection with, um, uh, crawlers, cam- cameras mounted on crawlers and an actual walk through the tunnel. And then they would prepare a, a report on the integrity of the, of the tunnel and the sewer line. Um, this, this is an approved project in the capital budget and, uh, their proposed price of just under $60,000 leaves a little over $10,000 in, in the approved budget for any remedial work that needs to take place. So, um, strongly recommend we go ahead with this project. So I don't know if there's any questions?
Uh, Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, um, Jim, a few, uh, did you have any idea which engineering company did the inspection in 1995? So if you, if you know them, that may be of help in at least getting you uh, an inspection report that you can pass on to this engineering company to make their life a little bit easier and they know precisely what the nature of deterioration has been from that time till now. Uh, can you find that engineering company in your file? And I'm sure if you contact them, you can find them. They probably be able to dig that, dig that out for you.
The, the last inspection was actually done in-house with, um, staff that, that have since retired. Uh, they, they actually performed the, the walkthrough themselves, but we can't find any record of any pictures they've taken or, or their assessment of the sewer line. I would imagine that remedial work was done at that time, but we have nothing on file.
Any further questions, concerns? None noted? Give a motion?
The motion I'm going to read out was just changed a little bit today when we just wanted to update the wording a little bit more, so we officially award the contract. So, um, just from what's in front of you today, it's a little bit different. Uh, so we have it moved by Stacy White, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that report number 2021-PW-007 entitled Stormwater Tunnel And Enclosed Sanitary Sewer Line Engineering Study be received? That council hereby awards RFP 56921 Underground Tunnel Inspection to Andrews dot engineer in the amount of $59,860 plus HST. And that staff be directed to present a bylaw to execute an agreement with Andrews dot engineer to complete the terms of RFP 56921.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item 6.5. Award of RFQ 56821 Purchase And Disposal Of Scrap Metal. Richard Charbonneau, Waste Manager, Waste Management Manager?
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, how's everybody? Um, through you, your worship, we went out for a, a request for quotation for, uh, for pricing on our, on the sale of our scrap metal of the landfill site. This is something we do every fall. Uh, this year, we were greatly impressed by the, the commodity prices that came in. Our lowest was, our lowest was $105 per ton, our highest was $175 per ton. So tonight, we're asking council if we can execute an agreement with MidNorth Recycling uh, for them to come and, and purchase the scrap metal from our landfill site and, and haul it away. Uh, that's the highest price I've seen in some time. It's estimated there's approximately 100 tons out there, so, uh, we could see an estimated, revenue of $17,500 if, if indeed there is 100, 100 tons. So that's why we're here tonight, just is to say, see if council will approve that, uh, request and entering to that agreement with, uh, MidNorth Recycling. Any questions?
Is that a local firm?
No, uh, that's, uh, they're, they're out of New Lisker typically. Um, we had one local firm, GFL, that, that bid and we had one out of Timmins Premier Recycling that bid. Um, at the MidNorth came in at the best price.
Okay, uh, Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I have one question. We don't have a set of scales, so how and where is this weighed for being paid by tons?
That, that's a good question, Counselor Owen, and through you, your worship. This is all done through Stella Jones, which is formerly Northern Pressure Treated Wood. So typically what they do is they, they weigh the trucks empty and then they have to weigh them full and present the tickets to the landfill attendants for, and then we compile them at the end of the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau.
No problem.
Any other questions or concerns? Give a motion?
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that report number 2021-DEV-042 entitled Award Of RFQ 56821 Purchase And Disposal Of Scrap Metal Be Received. That council hereby awards RFQ 56821 Purchase and Disposal of Scrap Metal to MidNorth Recycling in the amount of $175 per ton. And that staff be directed to present a bylaw to execute an agreement with MidNorth Recycling to complete the terms of RFQ 56821.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.6. Waste Reduction Week for 2021. Mr. Charbonneau, again?
Again, through you, your worship, Waste Reduction Week. It's celebrated from coast to coast in Canada. It's a national campaign that builds awareness around issues of sustainable and responsible consumption, encourages the selection of environmentally responsible product services and promotes actions to burn waste, disposal and conserve natural resources. This is held annually and it's been done since 2001. Waste Reduction Week in Canada through correlation of environment, nonprofit and government organizations from across the country shines a spotlight on the responsible and conscientious consumption. In this October, we'll be celebrating the 20th anniversary of Waste Reduction Week in Canada and the theme is Then, Now and the Future. The Town of Kirkland Lake currently offers drop-off locations for batteries, waste electronics, scrap metal and tires. During Waste Reduction Week, many of these collection programs are highlighted each day focusing on one particular item such as textiles, e-wastes, waste electronics, food waste and plastics. And it is encouraged to stem the life of these products through the sharing economy, swapping and repairing. Staff are, you know, additionally to that, staff are proposing a contest for each day of Waste Reduction Week. The intent is to give away one large recycling cart each day to a resident of Kirkland Lake who demonstrates the importance of waste reduction and the impacts on the environment by recycling, repurposing, swapping and repairing unwanted materials and products. Staff have reached out to CJK Radio on the possibility of participating in the contest by having an on-air giveaway each day between October 18th and 22nd. A representative of CJKL confirmed they are interested in participating in their morning show at no cost to the town. The contest will run alongside the social media campaign, hashtag KLWRW that occurs annually where a swag bag is handed out to random residents who have used the hashtag on either social media platform, Instagram, Facebook or during Waste Reduction Week. Additionally, the Circular Innovation Council, which leads Waste Reduction Week in Canada, are encouraging communities to create awareness by lighting a local mat landmark or building blue and green for the duration of Waste Reduction Week. The lighting will be displayed on the Waste Reduction Week in Canada website, TKL website and social media. Now, we've investigated the possibility of doing that with colored light filters for the effect and propose one of the following locations for lighting. Either the, you know, we could light both east and west end entrances into town or the Miners Memorial should counsel be desirous of that. Last year, there was 38 communities throughout the great nation that participated, including Niagara Falls, Toronto and Kingston. Toronto lit up the CN Tower, blue and green and Niagara Falls, of course, they lit up the water and Kingston was their main square. By declaring Waste Reduction Week in Kirkland Lake demonstrates the importance of waste reduction encourages residents and businesses to contribute to environmental and protection of our landfill. We may decide not to, but I doubt that would be favorable amongst anybody. And it would be very negative. The costs to run this contest that we're proposing, each waste recycling cart is $70. That's the big 95-gallon carts. If we give five of them away, that's $350. That will lose in revenue. But we could also capture that in our annual data call, which allows the funding for the municipality for our recycling initiatives and we may be, we may get some of that money back if not all of it back. Any questions?
Counselor White?
Not so much a question, but just I want to congratulate you. I think partnering with CJKL is an amazing idea. The social, joining a social media campaign, not only will it give us good PR, it's good exposure because anybody looking at that hashtag across the country will also see Kirkland Lake be a part of it. So that's just brilliant. I know you and lots of members of your staff are quite passionate about recycling and waste reduction and I really look forward to your innovative ideas, keeping council on their toes and coming to us and bringing these amazing ideas. You're doing a fabulous job. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor White. Any further comments? For the motion?
Before we head into motion, if I may, your worship, before we head into motion, we have to decide on what we're going to light up for the lighting of Waste Reduction Week, be it the signs or the Miners Memorial. Which would you prefer?
Question or comment from Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I don't know how the miners would feel about lighting up the Miners Memorial, but I think the signs are a great idea. I think the Miners Memorial is more spiritual, I think, than the signs on both sides of town.
I agree. Counselor Owen?
And just a suggestion for future years. If you contacted the Tobin Operating Authority in future years, you'd have a whole headframe to light up and they have lights that light up that headframe and nobody could miss it. I used to be a member of that operating authority and I think they would probably be open to such adventures. So that's just a suggestion for future years. Thank you.
Good one. Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, good idea. I'd like to propose that maybe in future we can combine this with Waste Reduction Week with a cleanup week of the town as well. I mean, everybody can do whatever they have to do in their neighborhood to go ahead and clean up in their own neighborhood. And then, of course, they can take it to the landfill site or they can recycle them and whatnot, but it's just, we brought that up our last meeting too. So I mean, the two should go hand and glove, in my view. So if you can find a way to incorporate the two to encourage citizens to do both activities, maybe during the week, during the same week. Thank you.
Rick, we'll leave that with you and fruit for thought for going down the road.
Absolutely. Thank you, your worship. So from what I'm gathering, we're good to light up the east and west signs?
Yes.
Okay. If I may, when I was investigating the prospect of doing the lighting, we've discovered that the filters come in many, many colors and I know there's, the next council meeting is on October 5th. I also investigated the possibility, should counsel be desirous of lighting up the Miners Memorial on September 30th, orange in recognition of the Truth and Reconciliation Day. Is that something counsel would want to have done?
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I love the idea. I think it's a great idea. You know what, for that particular day, that would be a, you know, a recognition of the residential schools and what's happened with, and it's in the same light as having a Miners Memorial. It's a reason we celebrate, celebrate and just recognize those days. Thank you.
I agree. Counselor Ivanoff? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that that would emphasize the spirituality of that day. The lost souls. Anybody that has a child, I can't imagine what it would be like not knowing where my child was or even if he was like in an unmarked grave and it certainly would fit in with the spirituality of remembering our miners of the past on the job. So I think that would be an excellent idea and I look forward to, well, supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? We'll have a motion to include the signage aspect of it. Counselor Owen?
Can we, can we add in to this motion that we also light up the Miners Memorial in orange on September 30th? And then it's all said and done with?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. But the Miners Memorial?
No, that's a separate thing. I think, I'm not sure who owns that site. I know the town maintains it. Yeah. It was, it was a group that originally. Actually, going back, it was it was Union Vice President Steve Yee. For the Miners Memorial. Yeah. I'm not sure what, like I know we maintain the grass. So I'm not sure who owns it. Mr. Haas?
Through you, your worship, I'm pretty sure the town owns it now.
Oh, okay.
It would be something that, the museum would have further information, I believe, but it was something that came to council probably about probably around 2013 or so, and I think that's where it was established that the town was the owner. But it is something worth looking into because we were doing the repairs, I think shortly after there to this memorial itself.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
So just to ask the draft wording that I would add to this would be for staff to purchase an orange filter to utilize on September 30th for National Day of Truth and Reconciliation and investigate the possible use of lighting the Miners Memorial. So I'll read the full motion.
Just make filter plural because I believe there's more than one light that we're going to have to color.
Okay, so the full motion moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that report number 2021-Dev-041 entitled Waste Reduction Week 2021 be received. That council declare October 18th to 24th, 2021 as Waste Reduction Week in Kirkland Lake. That council permit a social media campaign using the hashtag KLWRW where participants will be entered into a draw for a recycling swag bag. That council permit staff to work with CJKL on a daily recycling cart giveaway contest from October 18th to October 20th. Sorry, Richard, is that supposed to be 24th?
It's supposed to be the 22nd.
So it's the 18th to 24th is the whole week, but for CJKL, it's 18th to 22nd?
That's right.
Thank you. That council permit staff to install green and blue lighting filters on both town signs for the duration of Waste Reduction Week. And that staff be directed to purchase orange filters to utilize on September 30th for the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation and investigate the possible use of lighting the Miners Memorial.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Item 6.7. Request from Enbridge Gas for maintenance dig agreements. Ms. McNaughton, Planning Administrator and Recycling Coordinator, Data Manager, Jack of all trades.
All right. Thank you, your worship. Through you to counsel, we did receive a request from Enbridge to conduct some work within their easements and just slightly outside of the easements. So they're looking at having the maintenance dig agreements signed with the town. So for this year, they're looking at just doing some brushing and geotech work and then next year they're looking at replacing the infrastructure. So it would be in the area from north of Swastika towards Archer Drive. So that would be the area. And there is, I believe they said, two meters on the south side of the easement and then six meters on the north side. So they're just be outside of the easement doing some brushing work this year. And there is a revenue associated with each of the requests. So. Yeah. Any questions if there are any in regards to this?
None noted?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that report number 2021-Dev-046 entitled Request from Enbridge Gas Inc. for Maintenance Dig Agreements be received. And that staff be directed to present a bylaw to execute six maintenance dig agreements with Enbridge Gas Inc.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.8. COVID-19 Update. Proof of Vaccination Requirements and Council Chambers Information System Requirements. The Secretary, Director of Commendative Services.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to counsel. In this COVID update, there are two distinct items that we will be discussing. So we'll certainly go through them one at a time and then we can look at what the recommendations are. So as you are very aware, as of tomorrow, there is a requirement to provide proof of vaccination in what the government considers to be high-risk indoor settings. What proof of vaccination is, shows that an individual has received a full vaccination, so that that's typically the two doses and that it's been done a minimum of 14 days prior to that date. When they enter these facilities, they have to show proof of vaccination and they have to show ID. So for municipal facilities, the only facility right now that this is impacting is the community complex. And that is an indoor facility used for sports and recreational activities. To enter, you have to show proof of being fully vaccinated and that can be done with your vaccination receipt at this time. It can be done digitally or with a hard copy. The facility itself must confirm and review the proof that's given. And they have to show a hard copy of their ID. And then what the staff are required to do is to confirm that the the name on both documents match and the birth date on both documents match. Does not need to be photo ID. At this time, individuals 12 and under are exempt from the requirement. And the individuals that are between the ages of 12 and 17 are exempt if they're solely entering for participation in organized sport. And this is where we do have some areas that we do have to discuss. So what we as facility operators are required to do is to ensure that if someone enters our facility, based on the legislation, we know why they're entering. Where it becomes problematic is that it's very, very, very frequent that someone enters for one reason, but then stays for another. So for example, you enter the facility to play a hockey game and you're 14 years of age. You play your hockey game, you've got a doubleheader and you've got an hour in between. So you become a spectator in between games. You are not required to provide proof as you play, but you are required to provide proof as a spectator. Often happens with coaching staff officials as well, which can be exempt based on the legislation. So from the time of this report, as you can well imagine, there have been many, many calls. We've had municipal calls with small and rural municipalities around the province through both Parks and Recreation Ontario, Ontario Recreation Facilities Association. And we've had calls with the Tumis Community Health Unit for the public health advice. We've also reached out to legal counsel to determine what is our best rollout. What has, what we've come to realize is that most municipalities who have multi-purpose facilities, the recommendation is that we provide, that the patrons provide proof of vaccination for everyone 12 and over. In that way, we don't have to ensure we know why they're entering our facility. So that's what we're getting from most of our neighboring municipalities. On our Tumis Community Health Unit call last week, the other municipality that has an arena in our area is going to be doing that exact item. We then reached out to get a legal opinion because we wanted to make sure that we were within our rights. So I'll read from you the legal opinion. This is absolutely reasonable to make this a requirement. This is absolutely reasonable to make this a requirement at a multi-purpose facility. It clearly states that the regulation is only considered a minimum. Moreover, we have an obligation to protect the health and safety of our employees and patrons. Therefore, it is reasonable to require all 12 and over entering the facility even under the organized sport exemption. The legal opinion goes so far as to say it's unreasonable for us not to ask for proof because it does go against the Occupational Health and Safety Act for us to provide health and safety for those in our building. They then go on to talk about contravention of any human rights. The Ontario Human Rights Code does not recognize an anti-vaccination belief as part of any religious exemption. Under the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, public safety overrides the right to life, liberty, and security of the person or to equality, and this view is widely accepted. So we now know that most municipalities that we've had conversations with are enforcing ages 12 and up. Ontario Recreation Facilities Association has recommended that we enforce for ages 12 and up if we have a multi-purpose facility. And we have the legal documentation that indicates that it's well within our rights. In fact, it is more reasonable to require it than not to. So those are the reasons that why staff are recommending that. Couple of things to keep in mind as well. At the time of writing this report, both the Northern Ontario Junior Hockey League and the Northern Ontario Hockey Association had instituted full vaccination for all individuals aged 12 and over. So this wouldn't do anything different from what these organizations had instituted. We did receive information from the president of Minor Hockey today. And it's a letter from the NOHA that says that they are looking at amending that policy. They're waiting for more, they're reviewing more information. Right now, their policy enforces for ages 12 and up. What they may do is recommend for ages 12 to 17 and enforce for ages 18 plus. However, that policy has not been rescinded. So as of today, the policy that NOHA still does have and that's still on their website is that it is mandatory for ages 12 and up. However, that may change. There are lots of changes happening. We're trying to stay on top of it all. In fact, public health did indicate to us that they thought that there may be changes between Friday and Wednesday of this week in terms of this legislation because there were a few areas that were problematic. We have not seen anything come forth yet. So I doubt we'll see anything by tomorrow morning, but we may have to, we may have to roll with this really quickly because there may be more changes. Couple more areas. There are some exemptions for medical exemptions. They're pretty clear. We have a lot, we have the documentation that lets us know exactly what we are looking for for a medical exemption. So, so if someone provides that, then we accept that. The good news is, is that in one month's time, the provincial government will provide us with an app and a QR code. This will be, this will be very much appreciated. It's unfortunate they don't have it at the same time as the legislation comes into effect. But what this means is that once this app is developed and we are able to utilize it, someone could come in with their iPhone or their, their Android phone. And they would basically just hold it up and we would hold up a tablet and they would pair. And you'd get a little check mark, almost like when you're going into a sports event. Ding, yes, you're good. So that would tell us whether they, if they had a medical exemption that was approved, if they met the criteria, if they're fully vaccinated, it's very quick. Unfortunately, we've got a month that we have to take this on on our own. So we do have to hire additional staff. This has been recommended by our different governing bodies that we look at licensed security. So we are hiring licensed security. We're going to try to keep it for as short term as possible. We think that it probably will be until the app and the QR code are in effect. What they will have to do is they have to stand at the entrance. We are not allowed to store any information, which is very unfortunate. So Bonnie could come to the facility on Monday, show her proof of vaccination. We can't, we can't even remember in our heads that Bonnie came on Monday and she's back on Tuesday. Bonnie has to show proof of vaccination once again. So we're struggling a little bit with that, but that is the legislation that we are required to follow. We do have to show, we do have to take the time with our screeners to compare the two pieces of documentation. And they're looking at three different things. They're basically looking at name and name match, date of birth, date of birth match. Proof of vaccination, it has to say second vaccination. And then they have to look at the date and it has to be 14 days prior to the date that they're attending our facility or obviously more. So it will be onerous. We will see bottlenecks. We are going to try to do everything in our power. That's why we were up staffing to try to make this go as smoothly as possible. The, the charges that range are very much an incentive to make sure we get this right. I'm hoping that no one's going to be doing fines on day one as we try to work out the kinks. But they start with individuals. The individuals start at $750. So if one of my staff is looking at screening and they, they don't do something right, they could be charged $750. Those would go up to $100,000, up to a year in jail. For directors of a corporation, that would be the gentlemen and the ladies around the table. That's up to $500,000 and it goes much, much higher. I do not believe they would start with that high level, but it is very good incentive that we've got to get this right. There are going to be costs along with the upstaffing. These will be funded through our COVID-19 account. We, we have enough money in that. We are very hopeful that the upstaffing will be able to be eliminated once we have the QR code and the app, because we believe it would be a much faster process that we can handle with our desk attendance. So that's kind of that in a nutshell. Maybe I'll stop for questions at this point because that's that topic.
Councillor Ivanov?
No, I just have a comment. I think that's, I mean, it's a lot of work, Ms. Sackrider. I think having everybody prove after the age of 12 and up that they're, they have double vaccinated before they come into your facility. I think that's a necessity, not a, not a wish. I think that you have to keep your employees safe and you have to keep the other people in the building safe. So I certainly would support your request to implement that as a requirement.
Councillor Owens?
I agree, councillor Ivanov on this one. I think it's our social responsibility to lead by example. We need to do this. If we want to get out of it sooner rather than later, let's just hunker down for a little while and show proof of vaccination and just get done, get it done and over with.
Councillor White?
So I seem to be on an opposing stance on this. We're going over and above what is required of us. And we are asking 12 to 17-year-olds that although there is such thing as informed consent, they still have to live with their parents. So requiring children to do this is above really what they can, what they can do by themselves. Whether they're vaccinated or not, even though there is informed consent, children don't have a choice. A 12-year-old still has to live with their parent. We have the funding. We have the ability to screen these kids. They need to be able to go in and take part in social activities in the complex. They need this. They have very few other outings, especially children under the age that they can have jobs. I hope that council reconsideres. I got a call from the president of Minor Hockey today, just before council. She received an email stating that as of tomorrow, children 17, 12 to 17 will not be allowed unless they were vaccinated. That, that email is already gone out. I am asking this council to reconsider and not punish children from 12 to 17 that have to live with parents that may force their views onto them. So please do not do this to the kids.
Councillor Chaba?
Yes, I agree. This is pretty much all sweeping, starting from 12 to 17. I'm fully vaccinated myself, but we have to be really be aware of other people's rights. So my question is that what if people show up and they have, they have not been vaccinated because of medical reasons or other reasons. So how do we accommodate them? We just turn them back. So we're sorry, you can't come in here? And, and I don't know, have you looked into maybe have a rapid test in place? Because there are places now that if you objecting to being vaccinated, then we can actually conduct a rapid test at frequent intervals of, I guess our choice to put that to rest. So if people come in on religious grounds or on medical grounds and they say, well, I'm not going to be vaccinated and I'm not, and what will, what should we do? And I, and I also agree with Princess White too, that 12 years old, I mean, that's a very young, young age. And these are the very people that we need to be, within them, be very active, if you be in the community complex. So if people are not, if you don't want to have another option of decide you have to be vaccinated, then we're going to have a lot of issues. So what are we trying to do to accommodate people that will object to vaccination period?
I guess the, the clarification, Ms. Sackrider, is this is mandated by the province. Is that not?
No.
So what is mandated by the province is that every individual who is 18 and over who comes into our facility as a patron must provide proof of double vaccination. So if someone comes in between, okay, and I didn't emphasize this, I should, I should give a bit more information. If you're between the ages of 12 and 17 and you come to public swim, you have to show proof of double vaccination. If you're between the ages of 12 and 17 and you come to tunis skate, you have to show proof of double vaccination. If you're between the ages of 12 and 17 and you come to use the gym, you have to show proof of vaccination. The only ones that are not required by the legislation to show proof are the individuals that are either under, under 12, because they cannot be vaccinated, or between 12 and 17 who are in an organized sport. So that would mean minor hockey or the aquatic club or the skating club. Skating hasn't started yet, so they're not quite on my radar. Those are our three clubs that would have individuals. Those same individuals come to tunis skate, they show proof. So we know that our kids, and I'm not, I'm not trying to say across the board, but a number of the kids that are in organized sport also recreate for leisure purposes. They will have to show proof of double vaccination for that as well. So I apologize for not emphasizing that. So the same person, depending on why they're entering in the front door. So that's another reason our screener has to say, what are you here for? And if they're there for an organized sport, the way the legislation is now, it's different than if they're there for recreational activities. It is very, there's many layers to this.
This is going to be extremely difficult to administrate. I wouldn't want to be standing at the door.
So we are following the recommendations from our governing bodies, and that is that we do hire licensed security. So we are doing that. And that's again, the reason that they're recommending that. And it's not legislated. But we're getting lots of feedback from other municipalities that they are going to enforce 12 and up because there's no possible way. We know that there'll be fraudulent people who say that they're here for organized sport. We can't follow them in to see, did you go to the pool to swim? Did you go to a tunis skate? Did you go? We'll know if they go to the gym. It's a slightly different entrance perhaps. Very, very hard for us to manage. I think it would put us in a liable position more frequently than any of us are comfortable in.
Councillor Owen?
My problem is informed consent. If you tell a 12-year-old he can't participate in extracurricular activities or whatever, he's going to bug the parents. And he's going to bug them and bug them and bug them. That's not informed consent. Informed consent is the research that the parents do. And then they come to their own conclusions for their own reasons. Now, I am in favor of vaccinations. But I'm also in favor of parents being allowed to do their own research and make their own decisions based on what they've researched. I have followed vaccinations in day one as most people have, I'm sure. And I was reluctant because it was new technology and whatever. It took me a while to be convinced that, that I was going to get it. And what's really concerned me over this time period is the changes in what the government says is acceptable. When the vaccines first came out, the manufacturer said you needed X number of days between vaccinations. That was the manufacturer of the product saying that. And then the government says, oh, no, we can stretch it longer. When they first came out, you were supposed to get two doses of the same vaccination. And then the government comes out and says, no, you can mix them. What the government has said during this period of time has left a lot of people truly, and I think very rightly so confused. And when they're looking at the safety of their children, that confusion can lead to doubt. And that can be their informed consent. But twisting someone's arm by saying to a normal 12 or 14-year-old, you cannot participate in this stuff unless you're fully doxxed. It's not what I would say is informed consent.
Councillor Owens?
Just, I'm not even going to go into that debate about things changing or whatever, except for make a comment that in the 1950s, there was no seatbelts in cars. And at one point, people realized that if you're going 100 kilometers an hour, you hit something, you're going to go flying. So seatbelts came in. Informed consent, and this health unit is pushing, has gone down this direction for administering the vaccines in schools right now. They do not need the consent of the parent. I have seen children from 12 and over, it is legal. They're allowed to, and Dr. You were at the meeting as well. Dr. Corniel explained, the nurses will sit with the students. This has nothing to do with the school. The school has washed their hands completely of the process. The nurses come in, they talk to the students, explain the process, the pros and the cons, and it's up to the kid to make the decision. That's one thing. I agree with councillor White on, the kids have lost a lot of liberties or whatever in activities in the past 18 months and so has we as adults. But it scares me even more if these kids end up losing their school year again instead of the right to go see a hockey game without showing proof of vaccination. Having to go through another lockdown and having to do distance learning or e-learning or whatever you want to call it does not work. One year was okay. Second year was a struggle. Third year will be a catastrophe for these students if we have to go back into remote learning. So I'm not willing, and I know we're just one community in Northern Ontario. It's not going to make a big difference when you look at the amount of schools we have in Ontario. But as a teacher, as an educator, I cannot see myself just saying, well, no, just because you want to go watch a hockey game without showing proof of vaccination. Well, no. So, so I agree, and I see your point. I share in your concern. But I'm more worried about what it's going to do to them long-term if they have to stay at home once more because of, we have to go back into a lockdown or whatever. So I, I can't change my stance on the subject, on this position.
Councillor White?
So I think my comments maybe were too broad because we got away from what was being asked of us, and I should have been more succinct. We're being asked to go one step further than the regulation state currently that, correct me if I'm wrong, the current regulation state that to participate in an organized sport, you do not need to show proof of vaccination. If you are on the hockey team or the swim team, you do not need to show proof of vaccination according to the regulation, correct? But if you're watching that sport, you do need. And that is what is being asked of us, is to paint all of those activities with the same brush over and above what the regulation states. So far, Kirkland Lake has done very, very well with going with the experts. I'm not an expert. I'm not an expert. What I do know is higher levels of government has put in the regulation, and I am not willing to go further and punish children that do not have any choice in the matter. So, no, I will not vote to support that. If we want to ask all of our contractors, as it states in the report, all of our staff, we're all adults. And it's in the regulations for adults. These are kids, there's an exemption, let them have the exemption, let them play hockey. We have funding to do proper screening. We have it. Let's use it. Put somebody in the arena and screen them there.
Counselor Ivanov.
Yeah, no, I understand where Counselor White is coming from. Uh, I just received a text from Mandy Whedon, who's the Director of the Family Health Team. She says the, uh, uh, health unit is actually in schools right now vaccinating children, no consent required. They're simply vaccinating kids, twelve, twelve year old children are getting a vaccination now, and they're not asking their parents before their vaccinations.
But they do have to go back to their homes. So whether or not they're offered, there are children that will not be able to be vaccinated because they have to go home to those parents. So I don't know if you've ever been in an abusive home, but when mom and dad say no, the answer is no, and heaven forbid if you do. So this idea of, oh, everybody that wants to be vaccinated will be able to be vaccinated. It's not true, and it's outside of what we're discussing today. I am not willing to go above the regulation. We have not done that as a town so far. Please don't ask us to do it now.
Your thoughts, Bonnie?
I'm the biggest advocate of recreation probably that we do have in the room, and I will do anything to keep people moving their bodies. I think that is so important. I struggle with the ability to follow the regulation for the youth that come into our building for multiple reasons. I have not yet, as, as many municipalities, we, we have, we've been on the call a lot. Um, there was forty of us on the call on Friday. And everybody was struggling with how do we implement what the government has allowed us to do? The majority of people at that time indicated that they would be making it mandatory for twelve and over for the liability to abide by occupational health and safety and to ensure that we are able to meet the regulation. It, it's a tough one. The recommendation I'm, I'm giving, I feel badly because I would like everyone to be able to recreate. And as it is, we have, we will not be able to have some people because the choice is not to become vaccinated, which is their personal choice. And it's not an age thing. That's, that's every age across the board. There are people that will not be able to use indoor facilities with these regulations. I am hoping it is for the short term. I am hoping that this is one more step that we do that's going to be in the right direction to encourage additional vaccinations and stop the spread of the very highly Delta virus, which is so contagious. That's my hope, and I'm going along with what public health information they are giving us.
Okay, could you read the resolution as, uh, presented?
Sure, I was just thinking to, um, I can leave out the second half of Bonnie's report so we can break that up. Um, so right now we could receive the report, and then the recommended motion says that staff be directed to implement proof of vaccination for all individuals aged twelve and over who utilize the community complex for sports or leisure activities. And I currently had it moved by Eugene Ivanov and seconded by Casey Owens. So if you'd like to put that to a vote, we could.
But you'd have, wouldn't you have to put that to two different, uh, resolutions?
Um, sorry, or what?
You've got two, two items.
The second item, I didn't mention it yet because Bonnie's going to speak to, um, the IT upgrades for council chambers.
Yeah.
Uh, but receiving the reports, okay. And then this first item is about, um, the age of the vaccination for the complex. I would recommend that you put this to a vote and see where it lands, and if it's defeated, then you can pre- present another motion.
Okay, go ahead, read, uh, discussion.
Just a part of clarification. And I did say that, do we have a screening opportunity for all these people that may not have this fascination at all? Will they be screened instead? We'll have it. So if you can't, so if you don't have it, we can go to the other room and get screened. Okay.
Counselor Owen.
Well, we do have a screening process, uh, in at the complex. You have to fill out the same form that we had to fill.
I'm, I'm actually a rapid test number that.
Oh, okay, okay. No.
Yeah.
Because we do have a, a contact tracing, uh, screening process in now.
Counselor, uh, Owens.
So my question is for Director Zach Rider, then if you have to be able to read a room, and I kind of know where this is going to end up. So do we have, before we vote on it, do we have a mechanism in place that wants to control where the kids go in the complex? If you're done an event, you don't have a choice. You have to get out and you have to go around the building, come back in through the front door and start the process for whatever, because I'm getting messages on Facebook right now from parents, and I just want to answer those people. I will not answer a Facebook comment during a council meeting. That is like going way, way, way too far, like, no. But we have to be able to find a compromise. So is there a way, do we have staff, do we have a mechanism in place so that if you're done an activity, you have to get dressed, leave the building, come back in through the front door and go through this process again?
We do not have that mechanism in place now. If that's the way this goes, um, we probably will have to take a little hiatus from some of the activities just so we can get that in place. It will require additional upstaffing, um, and it will be basically escorting people to their, and, and many municipalities have been doing this in the past as well. They escort people directly to the room. Um, very short period of time coming before and after your sport event and then escorted out. Um, that, that is, that is not easy, but it is, that would be the way we would have to do it, to make sure that we are compliant.
Counselor Owen.
Um, Ms. Zach, you mentioned, uh, double header hockey games would not be possible for the players to stay in the dressing room? Like, that's just one scenario, but.
We, we don't have enough dressing rooms because with the COVID requirements, we've, we've got a, I mean, it, depending on how the schedule is, that could be a possibility. We are really rapidly getting teams out, coming in, sanitizing, getting ready for another team. So it's, it's possible if that dressing room was not being utilized in between. If it's being utilized, then they can't.
Counselor White.
So I did have quite a long conversation, uh, with Sheena, um, as I said, the president of the Minor Hockey Association because she had received that email saying as of tomorrow, uh, this would no longer be allowed, nobody would be allowed into the complex. So I had a, a quite a long conversation with her before the meeting. They did police themselves. The user groups were told to police themselves in the past, correct? So the onus uh, was on them at one point to ensure their members were adhering to all regulations, correct?
That is correct. This is very different. So when speaking with public health, we are not allowed, one hundred percent not allowed to defer proof of vaccination to a user group. It has to be done by staff or by staff can, can hire security to do it. We are, we are allowed to delegate, um, screening. So the screening that, where you answer if you have any symptoms, we can delegate that. We cannot allow anything to do with proof of vaccination. Another layer.
But yeah, you could definitely send out an email as was done today stating to all user groups, you are now responsible that once an, uh, event occurs, you were responsible for your membership to leave the complex in an orderly, timely fashion. That is possible.
Absolutely possible.
Yeah, that would be a layer for sure.
Yeah. And still up to us to enforce. So it would include the staffing to ensure that that activity is happening. This is a tough one. This has been my life the last few days.
And I make, uh, as the mover, I make a suggestion, you're, we're going to have to modify, uh, the recommendation because it will not pass in this form, so. Or do we just vote it down and then go back to square one to start?
Your choice. I have moved by Eugene and seconded by Casey. So between the two of you, if you want to put what's on the floor right now.
I will yield my position, somebody else to move to be the second or on, if they want to revamp the formulation on them, because I, I will not.
Counselor Ivanov, did you want to go ahead as the mover or what?
So I do have another point that we did not address contractors and, and the staff. We haven't even addressed that yet. We just focused on the children.
I believe there will be more motions if, yeah, if desired. Um, Counselor Owens, did you want to stay as the second or?
No.
Nope. Can I have a second or to the motion Counselor Ivanov has on the floor? There, somebody who would like to put a motion out? No motions?
Counselor White.
I do have a question, that is, we do not pass any direction to staff upon this, will it fall back to staff to do as they see fit? Or will just defeating the motion be enough of mandate to say, do not do this?
Right now, there would be no motion, so I believe it would be up to operations call. Ms. Zach Rider can speak to that.
The, the question was if a motion does not come forth, what happens? Is that what we're asking?
Basically, yes.
My understanding would be if, if a motion does not come forth, then staff are legally obliged to put into effect the legislation that we've been given by the province and to ensure that we follow that versus what staff have suggested. We typically don't bring to council what's legislated to us for operations, so I don't believe a vote would be required on legislation that we've received from the province because this, the proposal that staff brought tonight was um, an enhancement based on recommendations we have received. That's why we brought it to council.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, um, just to the point. Okay, if council agrees to follow provincial, um, recommendations, regulations, whatever the proper terminology is, that does not stop the, uh, medical health doctor for tamiscomine coming in with stronger recommendations. The, the local health unit has control over that. And to me, if he feels there's a problem with the provincial regulations, he would step in and say, you're going to need another layer of protection, whatever. So I'm quite comfortable if we follow the provincial regulations and, you know, our, our case count is very low in tamiscomine and has been quite very low throughout the whole pandemic. Um, so I'm comfortable going with the provincial regulations.
Counselor White.
So Ms. Zach Rider, would it be helpful for future possible COVID funding if we passed a motion this evening to direct staff to acquire more support than needed? Do you think that would be beneficial? Because I realize I am requiring more of staff than what staff can currently handle. So would that be beneficial if you had a motion behind you stating that you needed to onboard more employees?
Yes, that would be beneficial because this is outside of our regular realm of operation.
Counselor White.
In which case I would like the new, uh, new motion to be tabled stating staff be directed to follow current regulations. Uh, for organized sports, thank you. Um, and to bring back a report on required staffing or to support financial, I don't know, to support the financial COVID, yeah, yeah, thank you.
So is it necessary to put a report in there, like just?
Sorry, just from the working together here, I put saying staff be directed to follow current regulations for organized sports. Uh, maybe I should add the ages. Staff be directed to follow current regulations for twelve to seventeen year olds for organized sports and to implement any staffing needs to follow through with these regulations.
Uh, Ms. Zach Rider.
Could I make a suggestion for the wording of the motion, um, just to say that staff will follow Ontario Regulation three sixty four slash twenty? That way, there's going to be no confusion about a certain age group. It's, it's basically, we're following the legislation as written. And that way, if the legislation does change tomorrow or next week, if there's a small change, we are still just, we are still following the regulation unless staff brings something different to council for you to discuss.
Um, we can do that. Ms. Zach Rider, we're just discussing if we want to add to say, to utilize the COVID funding for, where the money's coming from. Uh, so we can add into the, implement any staffing needs to follow through, sorry, we're going to spot in, to implement any staffing needs to follow through with these regulations by funding through the I don't know, COVID funding? Work for the first funding. Okay.
Counselor Owen.
To be drawn from the CO- COVID funding?
There we go. So Counselor White has moved the motion. Is there a second or? Counselor Owens.
Can I just speak to it?
Yes.
I just find it is a compromise. I still believe in my stance on it and that it's not going to change, but this gives staff the opportunity with that wording to go get extra staff if we feel there is a need there. But it is a form of compromise.
Thank you.
Counselor White, would you still like a recorded vote? So the motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved, that memorandum number twenty twenty one dash C S dash zero two zero entitled COVID nineteen update, proof of vaccination requirement and council chambers information systems be received and that staff be directed to follow current provincial regulation three six four dash twenty for organized sports and to implement any staffing needs to follow through with these regulations to be drawn from the COVID nineteen fund.
No further comments, none noted, all in favor? Motion carried unanimously.
So just a reminder, at this time, we have received the report, but Ms. Zach Rider still has more to present. Um, so we can have more motions be put on the floor as we go if desired.
Thank you. I'll continue on with the second part. Um, the second part is in regards to information technology update. And with our municipal information systems manager, he has met with both the clerk and I a few times, um, looking at how do we ensure that we have an enhanced experience for council and for Um, looking at how do we ensure that we have an enhanced experience for council and for members of the public? And how do we ensure we are adhering to the accessibility laws regarding closed captioning? So right now, according to our M R MIS manager, um, the audio system in council chambers is not functioning ultimately and at its capacity. You're able to hear each other around the table right now and the speakers are working to, to um allow the recording. However, the speakers throughout council chambers are not working optimally. Therefore, when we bring people into chambers, um, they, they will find it a bit hard to hear. Right now, um, for those of us who are looking at council through the video, we are able to see those at the front um facing us, but we do see the backs of heads. And it is hard to see who's speaking and from a closed captioning perspective, that is not ideal. So from the video perspective, we do need an enhanced cameras so that we can then um toggle back and forth and identify who was speaking both on the, on the screen as well as by main. Where the closed captioning problems come in um is in the legislation. If something's happening live, we don't have a lot of regulations for the closed captioning. Um, it is a best practice, however, but once we have um a meeting being saved so that you can view it later, such as on YouTube, you must have closed captioning. This, this is not, I mean, it's, it's new this year, but this was all reported to council by the clerk. Um, I believe it was back in January. So this has been the time that we've been at home, um, or not in council chambers. So what's happening right now is that now that we have a number of people in the room, uh, we don't have the multiple cameras. The information, the communications coordinator does spend a lot of time trying to figure out what has been said to make sure that the transcription services are doing closed captioning correctly. So if you'll notice when you watch people on social media, if they have closed captioning, quite often the words aren't quite exactly what the person is saying and that's what's happening now. So our communications coordinator does have to go through and ensure that, for example, if Mayor Kylie is speaking, that Mayor Kylie's name comes up and that the actual words that are in the closed captioning are correct. Um, so we have known this is, this is coming because we knew that council would be coming back to chambers at some point. Um, our municipal information systems coordinator is recommending that he be given the time and the opportunity and the funding to perform the upgrades himself. He's quite confident that he has the skill set. Um, but as being a one man show for a very, very long time, he has not had any time to devote to this. There have been other more emergent priorities for him. He does have a second person coming on his team. In fact, I believe he started yesterday, so he will have more time to approach this in the future. The benefits are in speaking with him that if we went to contract it out right now, um, there aren't a lot of technicians who have availability, so it would definitely be something that would not be done in a very quick time. Also, the pricing is very high. What he feels is the most important is if he does the work himself, then he knows and understands it. And then if there's a repair or something that happens down the line, he, he's very comfortable with the system. So he did do a bit of um cost checking and he feels that to do the, this, this, the upgrades that are required, approximately $10,000 is required and that's an approximate at this time. So we would like to definitely look at what funding is available because a lot of this is to do with accessibility challenges. And then some of it, it, I mean minutely to do with COVID, um, mostly just in order to provide a, a good positive experience for council, for those who are there in person and for those who are joining us um remotely or virtually. I don't guarantee I could answer all questions to do with IT, but I can certainly try if you have any.
Counselor White.
I think this is amazing. Um, thank you for bringing it forward. I know the acoustics has been a problem since like last council. Um, I remember sitting in, in the audience and, and not being able to hear as well. So this is uh great news. I know that uh the request is that the public not join us. And though it saddens me to not have the handful of people that were very faithful in the audience, um, meeting after meeting here, they are civic minded and they will certainly understand that the delay is for the greater good of the community. So just kudos to staff. Thank you for doing it in-house, saving the taxpayers. This is just amazing news.
Any further comments or questions? None noted?
So the second half of Ms. Zach Rider's recommended motion reads as that staff complete all IT upgrades recommended by the municipal information services manager to ensure adherence to accessibility laws and to provide an enhanced viewing experience for residents. Is there a mover and second or for this?
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, um. Ms. Zachary, are you going to uh see if we can get funding for this? Cause it's not in the, the budget, I believe. Um, even if we got partial funding, um, that would be a great help. I just wanted to make sure that I, I think you implied it. So I just want to confirm that we are gonna go after funding.
Absolutely. My eyes are always open for funding opportunities and we'll see if there's anything that's currently open that will fit this criteria. And if not, we'll just keep looking to see if anything comes, comes forth in the uh, the next few weeks.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, um, going forward, I like to see this as being part of the budget because uh, you know, some of us that have business, this is part of doing business. Sure, that's, that should be part of the operations uh that you uh somehow look at your tech, technology is changing every time. And I think the staff should be, I mean, looking at that and say, well, listen, maybe we're gonna be needing all this change over every two or three, three years. So I think we should really be budgeting for that instead of waiting for a long time and then coming and say, well, we have to have a wholesale uh, uh upgrade. So I, I think we should be, should be going into the budget uh going forward. That would be my suggestion.
And I can pass that information on to our IT department.
Do I have a mover and a second or? Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that staff complete all IT upgrades recommended by the municipal information services manager to ensure adherence to accessibility laws and to provide an enhanced viewing experience for residents.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item uh number seven. Consideration of notice of motion, sorry. Item seven, consideration of notion of motion. None, okay, introduction.
I believe this is consideration of notice of motion. I don't believe there was any notices of motion last.
No. Okay, item number eight, introduction reading and uh consideration of bylaws.
I'll be stepping up for bylaw 21 oh seven three and bylaw 21 zero seven four.
Okay.
That bylaw will come next meeting, Counselor Owen.
Okay, I just uh, I didn't think to look at the bylaws on that.
Okay, so our first bylaw is moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash oh seven three being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Peterson Construction 2013 Inc. for construction services for the Swaseca Water Pollution Control Plant decommissioning and sewer system connection to the Kirkland Lake wastewater treatment plant.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Second bylaw moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero seven four being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Alex McIntyre and Associates Limited for the demolition of 37 Duncan Avenue North.
Any, any discussion? Counselor White.
I just want to thank staff for including so much information on this bylaw. It is truly incredible to see the level of transparency on, on this item. Um, kudos to staff for, for giving council and the public all the documents they need on this topic.
Agree. All in favor? Motion carried.
Next bylaw moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero seven five being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of M C L two eight three hundred two, two seven four zero three five eight, Ontario Inc.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Last bylaw moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero seven six being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute six maintenance dig agreements with Enbridge Gas, Inc.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item nine, questions from council to staff.
I have, can we ask a question during this period or do we have to submit it in writing and then come back?
The best process is to submit it beforehand because there shouldn't.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I don't expect an answer today, but if I can ask the question and then has to.
We can put the question out. We just can't, it's, we can't discuss it.
Okay. So, okay, so it's a quick question. All summer I've been traveling back and forth on Highway 66 and I've noticed the water levels in Gaul Lake are like abnormally low. I've never seen like in all my years going up and down that highway, the water like where the telephone line is totally out of the water. I've never, ever, ever seen that. And that is our main drinking source. Is there any way to find out if there's mechanisms in place to? When does it become a problem? The, the levels in that lake and this is our main water supply? So something can be sent or brought back to us next week or two weeks from now? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, notice of motion, Counselor Owen.
Yeah, I uh apologize in advance for not having the wording worked out. I've had several um some pretty heavy family obligations that I've had to meet in the meantime. But at our next meeting in council, I will cause to be moved to motion requesting that the M and R uh set up bear feeding stations um in the bush outside residential areas. Uh, the same way that bear hunting guides do in an effort to um, keep nuisance bears out of uh residential areas and to keep uh increased safety for the residents, especially children and elders. And I realize that the M and R is now part of another ministry. I'll, I'll work with Megan to get the wording.
Yep. Uh, item number eleven, uh, counselors reports. Counselor updates. Counselor Owen.
Yeah. Just on the bear situation, uh, we had another bear on Third Street again. Can't remember whether it was Monday or Friday. Um, it's a regular occurrence, so I just want to warn the residents to uh to make sure they're, keep their yards well lit. Um, some of the bears are quite small, so they could be underneath porches as well. Um, and one swipe from a bear can uh result in uh even a small bear can result in quite serious damage to a limb. So I just want to remind residents to be very cautious, especially after that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other reports? None noted? With motion to receive?
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White, be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Uh, we have a uh motion to move uh into a closed session.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section two thirty nine two to discuss one matter involving personal matters of an identifiable individual.
All in favor? Motion carried. We'll have a short break. Item number fourteen uh matters uh from the closed session, none noted.
Well, we do have something.
Oh, sorry, sorry, you're right, we do.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens, be it resolved that Tom Barker be appointed to the Texentennial Library Board.
All in favor? Motion carried, unanimous. Item fifteen, confirmation bylaw.
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero seven seven being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held September 21st, 2021.
All in favor? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that council adjourn the September 21st, 2021 regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Motion carried.